Okay, we're gonna get started. Thank you everyone for joining. My name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a project manager at Settlement Housing Fund. Welcome to our fourth town hall meeting for Harlem River Houses and Harlem River 2. As always, we're really excited that you're here to join us. We hope that you've come with your questions. And we're really excited to meet you, to interact with you, to to answer those questions and hopefully, you know, some of those concerns and questions that you may have get resolved today and you have some more information. Just to get started, I'd like to have our translators introduce themselves. We have three translators, excuse me, two translation lines. One is for Spanish speakers and one is for Chinese speakers. So if the Spanish speaking line translator could introduce themselves, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. The following announcement will be in Spanish. Buenas tardes a todos. If you want to listen to this meeting in Spanish, please call your phone number and enter the conference number 933-3317-5627. This information is on your screen. I repeat, the number to call your phone is 646-558-8656. And the conference number is 331-425-8640. Let's remember that if you want to call from your phone, please put your device in silent mode to stop the noise. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And would the Chinese language interpreter please introduce themselves?
Hello, if you need to translate simultaneously, please call 646-558-8656. Enter the ID number 64618579342. I'll repeat the number 646-558-8656. Enter the ID number 4618579342. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. So just a quick note about format. We dropped off paper copies of this presentation to all households at Harlem River Houses as well as Harlem River 2. So if you're listening to the audio over the phone, you should be able to follow along just by referring to that printed copy. The other thing to remember is if you cannot look at the printed copy right now and you're not able to watch this video, this video as it is going on live, we will publish a video recording of this entire meeting on our website, which is www.harlemriver.org. You just need to click on the tenant meetings link at the top and located there are all recordings of all our meetings today. And again, that's www.harlemriver.org. The video recording of this meeting will likely be posted by latest the end of next week. Just a couple of notes in terms of format. When anyone joins the meeting, they'll, they're muted. We have a Q and A session at the end of the meeting. So please do have your questions ready for that session. If you'd like to ask your question during the meeting, that's also fine, but please do so by typing it in the the chat box for the Zoom meeting. In order to raise your hand during the Q and A session to ask a question out loud, just click raise your hand in Zoom if you are using a computer or a smartphone or a tablet. The meeting host, either me or another staff member will call on you. We'll unmute your microphone so you can ask your question. If you're using a smartphone, again, just tap the screen of the Zoom meeting and a toolbar will appear. Tap participants and then tap raise hand. If you're using a computer, the same idea, just move your mouse on the screen. The toolbar will appear, click participants and click raise hand. And if you're calling into the meeting, you're also certainly able to raise your hand. Just dial star nine and your hand will be raised. So again, please do bring your questions to the Q and A, or if you'd like to ask them during the meeting, please type them in the chat and we will try to respond to as many as we can during the meeting. Quick agenda. So we're going to recap last month's meeting briefly. That should take about five minutes. We're also going to hear a quick word from NICA. I know we have some representatives from NICA on the line right now. We're then going to give an introduction to leasing at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River 2. We're going to also go into the key sections of the lease so that we all sort of have an understanding of what's actually in there. And of course, if you have any questions, please do ask them. We're going to talk a bit about house rules at Harlem River. We'll explain first of all what house rules are and then also talk a bit about what the house rules are at Harlem River. We'll then move to what the timeline is for leasings. Discuss some logistics and at the end we'll have a nice long 45 minutes for a Q and A. So before I move on, I think that NICA was going to say a quick word. Kyle or Robert, Melissa? Do you want to unmute yourself?
Hi, this is Robert Testero, Director, Leased Housing Section 8 here at NICA. Just want to welcome everybody and thank you for attending. Very excited about the upcoming closing under PACT. And we'll be here for questions, Melissa and I, Section 8. Melissa?
Thanks, Robert. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be here on the Zoom with you. My name is Melissa Renwick. I am the Senior Advisor to the EVP for NICA's leased housing program. So they're a Section 8 program. So I will be here with Robert answering any questions you might have about the Section 8 process.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ian Lundie. I'm a director with NICA's real estate team. We want to first and foremost, thank you all for joining us tonight. And we really wanted to quickly, for those of you who maybe weren't able to join some of our previous meetings, just give a quick rundown on how we got to this point and who the team is Harlem River Preservation that you're going to be hearing from and what their relationship is with NICA. So as many of you have probably heard at this point, we are using the PACT strategy, Permanent Affordability Commitment, together to bring investment to Harlem River Houses and Harlem River 2. The way that PACT works is that when NICA doesn't have adequate funding, we go to the federal government, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is where we secure all of the funding for public housing. And we ask for additional resources and one of the best tools that they have for providing additional resources to housing authorities is to work with us to go through conversions over to Section 8. Section 8 is a more flexible funding stream from the federal government that allows us to bring on additional sources of financing so we can have far more resources available to us to fund repairs at Harlem River Houses. So PACT is New York's version of the Section 8 conversions. And as part of PACT, we seek out a private partner or a nonprofit partner in the case of Harlem River and Harlem River 2 Houses who we work with to fully renovate the development and fully bring in new sources of financing. So the partner Harlem River Preservation will take on conducting the repairs. Afterwards, they'll serve as the new onsite property manager and they'll be providing enhanced social services and community programs, no role as the property manager. To select this team, NICA went through a competitive process and we want to emphasize that this is a partnership. NICA remains the owner of the land and we have full oversight of this team. And in the event that we needed to have the ability to correct or ask them to change the way they're managing or in some cases replace them, although I want to emphasize that this is a really fantastic team and by no means is that something we're planning for. We think they have truly excellent expertise to help bring all of the repairs needed to your site. So just a quick reminder of what we are addressing in PACT. PACT is a strategy to address the sites and grounds, the buildings themselves, the internal systems, the roofs and the apartments themselves. So up until now, NICA has really only had the resources to conduct really patchwork to address the effects, but with PACT, we're able to actually comprehensively invest in the development and address the full slate of repairs. We always want to emphasize that this remains a federally monitored and federally managed program. So Section 8 is still a public program. It's run by HUD. NICA remains the administrator of the Section 8 vouchers. And with that, there are robust tenant protections that are part of the Section 8 program in the same way that there are robust tenant protections that are part of Section 9. Key among these, resident rent will not be more than 30%.
Hi, I'm sorry. This is an inquiry by the interpreter. Would you mind speaking a little bit slower so the interpretation is more accurate, please?
Yeah, yeah, of course. Sorry, there's a lot to get through. So I was, I was trying to speak, but so key among the tenant protections is that resident rent will not be more than 30% of the household income. You will continue to have the right to organize. Resident associations will continue to receive funding. All tenants will have the right to renew their leases. Tenants will not be re-screened as part of the conversion over to Section 8. So everyone will be grandfathered into the program and will qualify. You will be able to add relatives onto the lease. You will continue to have succession rights if your family member is currently the primary leaseholder or a similar situation. You will continue to have grievance hearings. If you're a recipient of the earned income disregard, you'll continue to receive that in exactly the same way you do now. And this is a massive investment, which means there will be a lot of jobs as part of the PACT conversion. So with this will be the opportunity to apply for jobs and get new training that are really created by PACT. So with that, I just want to again, thank everyone for being here with us tonight. This process is really for you. So hearing your opinion, getting your feedback is critical to a successful PACT conversion. And at any point in time, if you have questions for NICA as well, you can, you can always reach out. Thanks so much. I'll hand it back to you, Sam.
Thank you so much, Ian. So I'm going to hand it off in a moment to Lori Broderick, who will be discussing leasing and walking through the different slides that we've prepared. But just before I do that, I want to quickly review what last month's meeting was like for those of you that were not able to join us. So first of all, as always, we really, we really do introduce ourselves every time. We know that not everyone is able to join every meeting. So by way of introduction, we are Harlem River Preservation LLC. You may see the acronym HRP. Just stands for Harlem River Preservation. We are a not-for-profit led developer team selected by NICA to lead the PACT conversion at Harlem River. Starting in fall 2021, so this year, we will rehabilitate, we'll begin to rehabilitate and upgrade Harlem River Apartments and the grounds. We will begin to serve as property manager and we'll also start to provide social services. Ian went over this, but to reiterate, the development is converting from public housing to project-based Section 8. One really important thing to remember is that NICA is going to continue to own the buildings and the land of Harlem River and Harlem River 2 after the conversion. So NICA will continue to conduct income certifications and will continue to play a role. Apartment inspections are currently happening to evaluate physical conditions. Many of you may have interacted with some of our staff and we really, really appreciate, you know, all the, all the new people that we've been able to meet over the last few months and look forward to meeting, you know, the rest of the community. As Ian mentioned, what rent will continue to be 30% of adjusted gross household income. If you currently pay a flat rent, your new rent will be phased in over a five-year period and utilities are included in your rent. Regarding COVID, we are prioritizing COVID safety. We have a variety of protocols in place for all of our staff working on the site. We developed in partnership with NICA, a COVID safety plan, which is available in multiple languages in the property management office at Harlem River Houses. If you are interested, please do go and pick up a copy. And of course, if you have any questions about our COVID safety platform and what we do to keep ourselves safe and keep residents safe, please let us know. Finally, wanted to plug one quick service, which is your event, I would say, which is our social services survey. We've extended the deadline to tomorrow by the end of the day. This is a very brief survey for you to tell us what kind of services you'd like to see at the development. We will then take this information and, and use it to actually design the services that we will provide in the development. To fill out the survey, there are a number of ways to do it. If you have a smartphone, you can open up the camera app on your phone and use it to scan the code at the top right corner of your screen right now. Just hold the camera up to the screen and it will open up a window to, or a little pop-up will appear to open an internet window, which leads to the survey. It takes about five minutes to complete. And I should mention that anyone who completes it and provides their contact information is automatically entered into a raffle. I said this in the last slide, but just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and it will be posted on our website, harlemriver.org. Under resident meetings, it will be posted by next week. If anyone is unable to watch this in this meeting in its entirety or would like to reference it. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Lori Broderick. Lori, please take it away.
Good evening, everyone. As Sam said, my name is Lori Broderick. I'm going to go over the PACT lease. Some very key important points. As part of the PACT conversion at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River 2, each household must sign a new PACT Section 8 lease. The PACT Section 8 lease was developed by NICA and informed by the residents, advocates and stakeholders. This lease cannot be changed without NICA's approval. Harlem River residents will transition from Section 9 public housing to Section 8 project-based voucher. A lease is a binding contract between a landlord and a tenant for a specific period. The lease agreement outlines the responsibilities of both the landlord and the tenant. The lease agreement memorializes tenant rights and it ensures that your apartment will remain affordable to your household. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go through each certain pages of the lease for those following over the phone. So during each slide, I will refer to the page of the lease that I'm speaking on. So page one of the PACT lease will be pre-filled with information NICA has on file for your households, including your Section 8 case number. During your lease signing appointment, please ensure all information on this page is correct. The effective date of your PACT lease will be the date of the PACT conversion, which is expected to be this fall of 2021. Next slide, please. Page two of the PACT lease. Page two of the PACT lease includes information about Section 8 and your monthly rent. Current Harlem River residents automatically qualify for Section 8 through the PACT program. This page will be pre-filled with your rent amount, which is determined by NICA's Leased Housing Office. Your rent will be 30% of your adjusted gross household income. Tenants who currently pay a flat rent will have their rents increased to 30% of their adjusted gross household income over a five-year phase in period. Next slide, please. Page three of the PACT lease. Page three of the PACT lease lists each member of your households and their relationship to the head of households. If you submitted a request to NICA to add or remove household members, please bring a copy of this paperwork to your lease signing appointment. After the conversion, NICA's Leased Housing Department will be responsible for processing requests to add or remove household members. Next slide, please. Page five of the PACT lease. Page five of the PACT lease includes information about your security deposit and utilities. The security deposit you have on file currently with NICA will be transferred over to CNC Apartment Management upon conversion. Utilities are the responsibility of management and will remain to be included in your rent. Next slide, please. Pages six and seven. Pages six and seven of the PACT lease detail the grievance process for rents and maintenance issues and NICA's continuing role at Harlem River. Following the PACT conversion, residents will still initiate grievances for issues regarding the tenant share portion of the rent through NICA, but will initiate grievances regarding repairs and maintenance with CNC Apartment Management. CNC Apartment Management must comply with NICA's outreach process prior to commencing any eviction proceedings. We prioritize working with residents facing hardships. Residents will submit annual and interim income recertifications and any household changes to NICA's Leased Housing. New residents will come from the Section 8 waiting list, which is administered by NICA's Leased Housing. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Sorry, thank you. So page eight of the PACT lease. Page eight of the PACT lease outlines residents' responsibilities. Residents may discard garbage only in designated areas. Pets are permitted under the post-conversion pet policy. Residents must register their pets with NICA before the conversion. Pets must be on a leash in public areas of the development. Residents may not tamper with smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. Residents must notify management of peeling paint and children under 10 residing in a unit that may require window guards. Dryers are not permitted in units. Tenants may not paste or nail any carpet, tile or linoleum to the floors or any wallpaper or the wall coverings to the walls or ceilings. Page 10 of the PACT lease. Page 10 of the lease includes information about the duration of your lease and income recertification. Under the PACT program, your lease automatically renews each year. You will still need to complete income recertifications through NICA's Leased Housing. NICA will notify you in writing when it is time to recertify your income and household composition as a Section 8 tenant. You can request an interim recertification if your income changes throughout the year. Dedicated CNC staff at our office are available to assist residents. The contact information and hours of the site office operation will be available at the end of this presentation. Next slide, please. Page 12 of the PACT lease. Page 12 details the smoking policy. In 2018, NICA launched its Smoke Free Initiative to create healthier homes for residents and working environments for employees by reducing exposure to secondhand smoke and providing support to residents who smoked and wanted to quit. We are committed, committed to this initiative. Harlem River will have 100% smoke-free policy. This means smoking, cigarettes, electronic cigarettes, pipes, et cetera, is prohibited in all units, common areas and grounds. The House Rules for Harlem River are a written list for the property that will, that you will receive with your PACT lease signing during your lease signing appointment. The House Rules for Harlem River will be created to enhance the quality of life for all residents. They are subject to approval by NICA and the Harlem River Tenant Association. House rules aid in fostering an environment where all residents can respectfully and peacefully enjoy their home. Next slide, please. So to recap what we just went over, which I know was a lot of information, current Harlem River residents automatically qualify for Section 8 through this PACT program. Your rents will remain 30% of your adjusted gross household income. If you're a household that is currently paying flat rent, your rent will increase over a five-year period to 30% of your adjusted gross household income. The pet policy after the conversion will be comparable to NICA's. So please make sure all of your pets are registered at NICA's Property Management Office. Your PACT lease will automatically renew each year and utilities are included in your rent. Vacancies at Harlem River will be filled from the development site-based waiting list administered by NICA's Section 8 Leased Housing Department. Grievance procedures will remain in place. So what is the timeline for the lease signings? We sent out this past month's sample copies of the lease. They were distributed to all residents and uploaded to our website, harlemriver.org. Starting next month, lease signing appointments will begin. Residents will receive appointment notices on a rolling basis. We will reach out to you for a lease signing appointment. Between the months of May and August, lease signing appointments will continue. And that's for the anticipated closing date, which is going to be in 2021 when we convert over to Section 8. How can you prepare for your lease signing appointment? Please review the sample lease we delivered to your unit. We have extra copies at the property management office and we also have copies available on our website. If you have any questions, please feel free to visit our office or give us a call and leave us a message. The number to reach us is 212-862-1399, extension 2719. You can also send us an email at info@harlemriver.org. Residents, we also encourage residents to contact Legal Aid Society for Support, which is free of charge, and you can reach the Legal Aid Society at 212-298-3450. We also encourage residents to gather documents that are needed for your lease signing. We will be requesting that heads and co-heads bring a government-issued photo ID, which includes a driver's license, a non-driver's license, permit or passport. If any residents have a reasonable accommodation request, please bring those requests and any supporting documents. If there are any special circumstances concerning your unit, our construction team should be aware of. Please bring those documents as well. This is an opportunity to let us know more about the conditions of your apartment and or building. So at least two weeks before your lease signing date, you will receive a written notice at your unit from us Harlem River Preservation stipulating the date and time of your appointment. We will work with you to schedule an alternate date if necessary. Only the head of households and co-heads need to attend the lease signing appointments. Your lease signings will take place at our office, which is located at the former library at Harlem River 210 L West, 153rd Street. If a resident is homebound and or disabled, we will work with them to schedule a home visit for the lease signing appointment. Your lease signing appointment will take about 30 minutes, maybe 60 the most. We will adhere to COVID-19 safety guidelines during your appointment, such as face covering, social distancing with limited capacity, et cetera. Please remember to bring your government-issue ID for heads of households for those signing, for the heads of households and co-heads and any reasonable accommodation request that you may have to your appointment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lori. So we're now going to move on to the Q and A session. I know that some folks asked questions in the chat, which we'll certainly be able to answer. And many of you may have questions that you'd like to ask out loud. Just as a reminder, if you'd like to ask your question out loud, please raise your hand in Zoom. We'll then call on you during, during this session. We'll unmute your microphone so you can ask your question, of course. In order to raise your hand on a smartphone, just tap the screen of the Zoom meeting. A toolbar will appear. Tap participants and then raise hand. If you're using a computer, just move your mouse on the screen. It should reveal a toolbar in the Zoom window. Click participants and click raise hand. And if you are calling into the meeting on a telephone, just dial star nine to raise your hand. With that, I'm going to hand it over to another of our team members, Ayana Oliver Taylor, who will be moderating the Q and A. Ayana?
Thanks so much, Sam. We have a couple of questions that we received in the chat. Phoenix Gaddy asked, do you have any comment related to the Harlem River tenants who are going on rent strike and the potential protest for, against Ratten Pact on Friday or Saturday at 1:00 PM? I'd like to ask our colleague Donald to respond to this question.
Okay, I was trying to unmute. Good evening, everybody. So it has come to our attention that the, that there is a protest pending a rent strike on, on Saturday. And there's a lot of rumors out there that's not true. And we want to talk about a couple of them. One, privatization, rent increases and displacement. And as it was explained earlier in the presentation by NICA, this is a partner this is a partnership. And it's a partnership with the development team, Settlement Housing Fund, West Harlem Group Assistance, NITSHA, CNC as the managers, LMN, and Social Service Providers. NITSHA is involved in this project from beginning to end. They still remain owning the land and the buildings of the property, and they will continue to do the annual certifications. Other concerns about the rent increases. We have just discussed that in the lease. And the tenants will remain paying 30% of their income. We have no ability to raise rents, and the rents will not be raised. It's based on federal guidelines, and you will pay 30% of your income. And the residents that's in good standings will not be displaced. All residents are automatically eligible with no re-screening. And this is under the protections of RAD, the program that protects you and that you're going through. It is a tedious process on the lease. And we go through it with other projects that we've done. And we pull your hand through that process, and we'll get you through the understanding, the 30% of your rent, get you to understand what you have to do to get your leases signed, renewed, and all of that stuff. I don't know if there's any other concerns, but you can ask more direct questions, and maybe we can answer them for you. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Donald. I'd also ask that our colleagues from NITSHA, potentially Ian, reiterate the PAC program and how we got here, and the benefit of the program and the requirement of the lease and how subsidy is able to fund through the project in order to finance the additional repairs or capital repairs that are required.
Hi, this is Marissa Schaefer from NITSHA. I just want to echo what Donald said, which is the PAC program and what Ian said at the beginning of the presentation, is that the PAC program is here to bring capital repairs to your development, to bring an experienced team in Harlem Preservation to your development to bring the repairs and also manage the property. And it really is a partnership with NITSHA. We continue to own the land and the buildings. We have requirements that we have, and we hold the Harlem River Preservation Team, too. NITSHA also continues to manage the waitlist. So there will be, no, privatization point, this is not privatization, this is a partnership. To the gentrification point, everyone who is currently living in Harlem River houses in Harlem River, too, will be staying and automatically qualifying for the conversion. And if there are any vacancies moving forward, NITSHA will fill those vacancies with people who are qualified through the Section 8 waitlist. So, again, to reiterate what other people have said, we are happy to answer any questions folks might have. And we hope that we can continue this partnership and move forward and answer those questions so that we can have a successful conversion and give you the renovated homes and increased services that you all deserve. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Marissa. I'd like to give the translation line to the opportunity to ask questions if there are any. Are there any questions on the Spanish line?
No questions on the Spanish line as of now.
Thank you.
Oh, one second. We have a question on the Spanish line.
There are no questions on the Mandarin line.
Is it you, her, and who else?
A child of 11 years.
Okay, one moment. I'll ask the question. I would like to know that my apartment is currently being repaired, but I live in a one-bedroom apartment with my wife and my son, and I would like to move. I would like to know what the process for that is.
Thank you so much for your question. Sam, do you want to address the question?
So this actually might be best answered by the CNC team. I can speak to it generally, but Doreen, are you able to speak to that in particular?
Yes, it is my understanding that after closing, we will be presented with a transfer list, at which time we will begin the transfer procedure. So it is very important for anyone who may require a transfer to let your current NITSHA office know so that we will be in a position after closing to make the necessary moves when the units are available.
Thanks, Doreen. Was there a follow-up, or did that address the question on the Spanish line?
That was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Like, there are a couple of hands raised. Melanie, can I ask that you unmute?
Good evening, everyone. How are you? I'm just trying to get a clear understanding of the rules in terms of Section 8 and the income requirements. My understanding is that, and I think you guys mentioned again this evening, that once the transfer happens, the first transfer happens, we all qualify under Section 8. However, my issue that hasn't seemed to been addressed is it's constantly said that every year we will still be required to certify and check our income and things like that. So in the far future, let's say five years from now, are we still going to be, those of us who are now grandfathered in, are we still going to be in the same situation where our income, if our income goes up, we will still be okay, our homes will still be secure? Or is there a point when that no longer exists? Because my understanding is that's not the case right now. But I just need clarification about that in terms of the future income requirement. So in the future, will we lose our homes, basically, if our incomes are too high?
Hi, this is Robert from NITSHA's Section 8 Leased Housing. And again, that's a great question, and I'll ask my colleagues to join as well. But basically, just like in public housing, under the Section 8 program, under PAC, you will be required to recertify your income and family composition on a yearly basis. Keep in mind that after one year, okay, under PAC Section 8, you can request a transfer through the Leased Housing Department, which will review your transfer request. And you are correct. So if your income goes up, your rent share goes up, just like it works in public housing. Unless you're paying a flat rent, that means that you're not paying 30%, but we'll phase you in over a five-year period. But is your question more geared towards the transfer process or the annual recertification?
It's more toward the annual certification. And in terms of, because my understanding was originally, we weren't going to, the income was, I heard somewhere along the line that the income was not going to matter, that we are grandfathered in, and no matter what our income is, we would be paying 30%. So yes, like you said, if our income goes up, then our rent goes up. That makes sense. But my concern was whether or not if the limit is normal Section 8, are we going to have to abide by that original Section 8 rule in terms of income?
So, hey, Robert, I can jump in. Hi, my name is Melissa Renwick. I'm with NITSHA's Section 8 program. So I think that there's a couple concepts that are being confused, and that's totally fair. Section 8 and public housing can have sort of confusing requirements sometimes. So for the Section 8 program, if somebody was applying to it for the first time, there are income limits that apply. That will not apply here. You guys are converting in place, and there are no income requirements. You will all qualify for Section 8 upon conversion. Those income limits never come into play again once you're on the Section 8 program. However, as my colleague Robert talked about, you will have to complete an annual recertification, which operates just like it does with public housing. You will tell us your household income and composition every year, and we will be adjusting your tenant share portion of the rent based on that. So if your household income goes up, your tenant share will go up. But there's no income limit that comes into play for you guys because you all qualify because of this conversion. An income limit only applies at admission, and you guys are not going through that process.
Gotcha. Okay, that was my confusion. Because, yes, there's a lot of information, and I've heard of different things with Section 8. And I just needed to confirm that because hopefully, our incomes will increase over time. We will all do better over time. But we don't want to have the thought of, can we get kicked out? So I think I'm probably not the only one with this thought. We want to make sure, okay, as our lifestyle changes, we still have a roof over our heads, that we're not worried about fair housing and housing that we can afford. So I appreciate the explanation.
Yeah, absolutely. It was a great question.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. There's another question related to Section 8. Candy Vargas asked, "For those of us waiting on a transfer, can we get to Section 8 before the year so we can move out?" Robert?
No, the transfer only occurs once the conversion happens, and then after one year on the program, unless there's some type of reasonable accommodation or circumstances where we need to waive the one-year rule. But anything prior to the PAC closing, basically, you'll have to deal with your public housing management regarding that. But certainly, once you become a Section 8 tenant, you do have that option to transfer after one year.
Thank you. And what about if your children move back in after the conversion? Will they be eligible for succession rights?
I was just getting ready to answer that in the chat, but I can answer it here live. So if you have children that are joining your household, you will need to submit an interim recertification request to NITSHA's Section 8 program, and you'll need to seek permission to add them to your household. If they are added to your household after one year, they will qualify for succession rights to the subsidy.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yep.
There are some more hands raised. So will the number ending in 8652, unmute? 8652, can you please unmute?
You should be able to unmute now. We can circle back, maybe, Ayana? We might see the technical issues. Oh, there we go, I think.
Hello?
Hello.
Yeah. I'm concerned about the lease signing. When are y'all expecting us to sign a lease if nobody's here doing no work yet?
Thank you for your question. Lori, you want to outline the schedule again?
I said, when are y'all expecting us to sign lease?
So you're gonna, how are you, ma'am? This is Lori Broderick. So we'll be sending out notices next month, in the month of May. And then we would be doing lease signing appointments between May and August.
Okay, I see. Because my thing is, I'm not ready to sign no lease if ain't nobody here doing no work. That's my problem right there. That's my issue.
Understood. And I would just say that the lease signing process is the first step that allows us to, our team to come on site and effectuate the conversions so that we can start doing the large-scale capital repairs.
I got mixed feelings about signing leases when there's nothing being done on the property yet. That's my whole situation right there. That's what I'm concerned about.
Ma'am, hi, this is Marissa Schaefer from NITSHA. I just want to reiterate that, NITSHA, the repairs don't start until the Harlem River Preservation comes on to the site. And they can't come on to a site unless we have the tenant leases in place, and we know that the resident rights and protections are documented in that way. So that's why it happens, that leases happen first, and the rehabilitation will take a few years, two years. And so that's why the leases happen first, and then the renovations will follow. And we're happy to answer any other questions or concerns you might have. So feel free to send us an email or give us a call, and we can answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, okay.
I'd now like to ask the number ending in 7924 to unmute.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I have a problem where I live. The tenants above me robbing me and monitoring everything I do. And they're using chemicals that make me uncomfortable in my apartment because there were tenants, the Thomases, who lived in 1B at 2641 Seventh Avenue. And they moved out. And management says that they moved out. And won't tell me if they moved across the street. And there was also an Ava Smith. And she was in 4A. And now there are teenagers there who are doing the same thing that Ava was doing, trying to take over my apartment. I'm not a rich person. I'm a struggling artist all my life. I grew up in the projects. There were no crackhead, cokehead gangs, which these people are. And they forced my daughter, I went to get the COVID Pfizer shot last Wednesday. They knocked on the door, forced my daughter to let them come in and take artwork because they said that they did the artwork and that they were trying to help me. And I don't know what the hell.
Hi.
Excuse me?
Hi, this is Jean, the social worker. How are you doing?
Hi, Jean. Just so everyone is aware, I've just muted that microphone. We just have a policy for these calls to really not discuss other tenants' personal information. So Jean, if you don't mind, would you mind reaching out to the tenant after this so we can discuss her concern?
Sure.
I'm so sorry to cut in there. Is that all right, Jean?
Yes, definitely. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It looks like we have a question on the Spanish line. I'd like to go back to the I'd like to go back to the Spanish line.
I've asked twice already and nobody is speaking yet.
Okay. Um, so we've still got some hands raised. So I will ask the number ending in three, one, four, nine, to please unmute. Three, one, four, nine, can, there you go. Hi.
Hi, that's me, that's me. Okay, I have a two-part question. One is, is the new lease including the gas and electric? And are we, the second part of the question is, will we be able to move anywhere in any five boroughs after a year with the Section Eight? That's my question.
So, Robert?
Yeah, I can answer the transfer part, right? So again, after one year as a PAC Section Eight resident, you can request a Section Eight tenant-based transfer voucher to transfer anywhere within the five boroughs. Or if you wish, you could also take your Section Eight outside the five boroughs to anywhere in the country that has a housing authority that administers a Section Eight program. Uh, that's called a portability option, which is very easy to request through leased housing. But again, that'll be after the one-year period.
The other question was, does this new lease include gas and electric?
Um, so I can respond to that unless Sam, you, Sam or Judy, you want to respond?
I'm happy to, but you can, you can feel free.
So these properties are currently master metered and will continue to be master metered. And so
I can't hear you, ma'am. I can't hear you.
These properties are currently master metered and will continue to remain master metered. So residents will not be paying for utilities as part of the conversion.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Absolutely. Um, we've got a, a hand raised from Jessica. Jessica, may I ask that you unmute, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, so I was trying to keep up with the chat. And I noticed that some of the questions weren't answered, so we can all know. Someone asked about painting. Queen B had asked about recertification and mentioned that, you know, we couldn't get through the portal because there's always like technical issues. We called the management office and we can't always get through. I've been waiting for about two weeks to get a call back. April's wrapping up. The quote-unquote good standing means, you know, paying your rent on time, being in compliance with all the rules that's on lease and recertifying in a timely manner. But we're having issues. So then what happens to us? Like Queen B, myself, and whoever else is in that gray circle, if we don't get our stuff done in time and the, the end of the month is tomorrow, are we no longer in good standing? Or we can't get through and we're not feeling supported because they're on vacation, they're never there, they're out to lunch, they're out sick. So we're feeling kind of like abandoned. At least that's how I feel. And I'm not sure, you know, I'm sure other people may feel the same way. But trying to be in compliance and not having help really is piss poor. So what then do we do?
Um, understood. And, you know, I'm, I'm sorry for what you're currently experiencing. Melissa from NICA, I don't know if you want to respond to these questions related to good standing in the NICA portal?
Um, sure. So I did respond in the chat. If you're having problems with your public housing annual recertification, if you could, please email the PAC email address, which is pact, P-A-C-T, at nica.nyc.gov. Somebody on the PAC team will be able to follow up with you on that. Um, and in terms of your concern about not getting the annual certification in by that April first deadline, you know, right now, both public housing and Section Eight are offering a lot of flexibility to tenants because of COVID and those, and so there's not going to be any impact to your standing as a tenant if you're not able to recertify by April first. So please just reach out to that email address. And somebody on our PAC team will follow up with you and help you get connected to the people who can help you complete that annual recertification.
Okay, I'll email, you know, tomorrow because I have not been able to get through the management office to actually get help. Either they're getting messages or
Yeah, I apologize for that.
Oh, well, so while I have your attention, I also saw someone asked about when was the painting and renovations going to happen? Originally, I said the summer, now you're saying the fall. When, when is the work scheduled to happen in our apartments? I mean, I already had, I guess, patchwork done in preparation for whatever next inspection is happening. But when does the actual work in our apartment happen? So that we can prepare, declutter, and do what we have to do as, you know, tenants?
Uh, thank you, Jessica. That's a great question. Sam, do you mind just giving an overview, HQS scope and then
Absolutely, yeah, Jessica, it's a great question. So repairs will occur in, we'll say, just to simplify things a bit, in two stages. The stage right now, one stage is actually starting, right? It just started last week, the, the April twenty-sixth was the first day. That is the patchwork that you're referring to, I think?
Yes.
That will, that is occurring at most of the units in the development. We're doing that work. We are required to do that work before the conversion. So before we convert in fall two thousand and twenty-one. I want to make really clear that this work is different from the full construction work. It's just, as you said, actually, patchwork is a great way to, to describe. The full construction work, you mentioned, we initially said it would begin in the summer and now we're saying fall. Um, so these projects are, as you might imagine, quite complicated with a lot of planning that needs to go into them. And we certainly are trying to deal with COVID and different delays. And we want to be as transparent with you as possible about the schedule. So as soon as anytime the schedule changes like this from the summer to the fall, we communicate it in a forum like this, like this meeting. So as of right now, patchwork is ongoing. It will occur through the summer. Then the big construction work, so redoing the kitchen, redoing the bathrooms, you know, new flooring, new paint, the grounds, all of that is now scheduled to begin in fall two thousand and twenty-one. In terms of when your actual apartment will get that, just one thing to remember is that there are over six hundred and ninety apartments and we will need to, we're doing all of them. So it will take some time. I don't want to say, you know, right now, exactly which apartment is going to occur first, second, third, fourth, once we get to the, once the, the main construction begins. But, but one hundred percent, we will be communicating with all tenants well in advance of that work. So that exactly as you described, there can be decluttering and preparing and, you know, ample opportunity for tenants to, 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 you know, communicate with us about schedule. Um, but we will, we will provide ample written notice to every tenant before we, we actually begin in their unit. But the first unit, as of right now, the schedule is to begin in fall two thousand and twenty-one. As we get closer, we will communicate more specific details, but that is the schedule as of now.
Okay, great. Thank you all.
Thanks so much, Jessica and Sam. Um, I'd like to ask Joe, who has his hand up, to unmute, please?
Yes, hello?
Yes, hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but there's a bit of an echo. So I'd ask others to unmute or to mute themselves.
Okay, can you tell me, what exactly do you mean when you say master, master meters?
Yes, so the, the property is going to, or the landlord will be paying for all utilities. And so we will not be direct metering and charging utility to residents.
We not?
I'm not hearing you.
So Ayana, that, that was a little bit quiet. I, I don't know if you could move a little closer to the mic. But Joe, to answer your question, and sorry to interrupt Ayana, uh, master metering just refers to very generally utility usage. So how much gas is used, how much electricity is used, is calculated at the, at the level of the entire building. It's not each individual apartment. Really, the only thing that tenants need to be concerned with is the fact that you will not be charged for your utilities. This is something that we as the, as the landlord will be paying. Did that answer your question?
Joe, you're muted if you're trying to speak.
I'm not sure if that answered your question, Joe, but if not, please, oh, it looks like you're unmuted now.
Um, are they changing over to central air?
Hi, Ellie. Are you, are you able to address the, the question?
Yeah, sure. Hi, sir. Um, so it, it, we're going to be putting in a system similar to central air. The only difference is that in addition to providing cooling, it's also going to provide heating. So you'll no longer have the steam heat in Harlem River One specifically. Uh, you'll have air conditioning and heating provided through a heat pump. That's at, at Harlem River One.
Thanks so much, Ellie. Uh, Joe, does that address your question?
Yes, I believe so. And it won't generate a Con Edison bill, right? We won't have to pay for no, no utilities.
That's, that's correct. You do not have an electric bill.
Okay, thank you.
Ellie, as, as a follow-up to that question, will the central air and heating be in every room or in certain rooms?
At Harlem River One, there will be heating and cooling in all, all the rooms in the apartment.
Thank you. Um, it looks like we have a couple more hands raised. Jaco, may I ask that you unmute, please? Hi, I'm sorry, you're still muted. There you go. Hi.
My question is, when all the renovations are being done, are we staying in the apartment or being moved somewhere else?
Thanks so much for your question. The, the work is tenant-in-place rehab. So Ellie, can you please give a general description of what the process will look like for residents during the renovation process?
Sure. Um, first of all, I, I should just note that we've, we've been working on these type of projects. In, in other words, where the tenant remains in the apartment for several years. Uh, more than the last ten years, we've, we've successfully completed thousands of units. It's a, it's a coordinated effort where we work closely with the tenants and the management company and the contractors doing the work. Everything is scheduled well in advance of us knocking on your door, whether it's to paint the apartment, uh, which typically takes a day, or putting down new flooring, which also typically takes a day, or the more intense work, uh, for example, renovating your entire kitchen, removing all of the cabinets that will be, that will take place over, over roughly a week. Um, so everything is scheduled. Uh, we give tenants, first of all, obviously, we want to make sure that we're able to get access. So more than a month in advance of us starting the work, we reach out to the tenants, we schedule it. We make sure that the date works for everyone. Everyone has a lot going on, right? Between family and school and work, uh, any number of, uh, any number of things. Um, so we try and schedule well, well in advance of us coming in. And then the, the work itself is coordinated in a way that a tenant can remain in their apartment. We'll have hospitality suites set up if someone wants to leave during the day. Um, and we're never in every room at one time. So it's a very focused effort. So for example, when we're in the, when we're working in the bathrooms, the, the work is intense, but it's limited to that one area. And we're not talking about large groups of people coming into your apartment. It's typically limited to two to three people. Uh, so they'll take, they'll work on different shifts. You'll have contractors going in and doing demolition. You'll have a separate, a separate crew going in and working on electrical, then a plumber, then a carpenter. So it's a, it's a choreographed effort, uh, all under the, um, all of it falling under a dust and noise mitigation plan. We put up a lot of protection on the walls, on the floors. We have HEPA filters running in the apartments, making sure that we're not generating any dust. So it's a, um, it's, uh, it's a lot of work. It's, there's no question that it's impactful on the tenant. Um, but we've, like I've mentioned, we've done thousands of these units and we've, we've got it down to basically a science at this point.
Okay, and as far as the hospitality, do we have to sign up in advance or?
So we'll make sure that something is available. It's all going to be coordinated through the management company. So we as the, as the general contractor, work hand in glove with the management company and make sure that there's always an accommodation for a tenant who needs one. Some tenants stay in their apartment, some tenants like to get out of their apartment, you know, for, for a few hours or the day. Uh, but we're always able to accommodate whatever the tenant needs.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks so much. Um, Candy Vargas, you have your hand raised. Can you please unmute?
Yes, and for this portion, I want to start my camera. Um, can I start my camera? I just want to show you guys something. Are you guys able to see?
I can see.
Can you see me? Can you see my hand or me?
I can see your, we can see your face.
All right, perfect. So this is my apartment. This is my current situation. Are you guys able to see this? This is how I'm living. Um, I have two kids. I have a toddler. I have a thirteen-year-old. I have complaint. I have tickets waiting. Every other hour, I have to be drying the water that's rising from my floor. You can see the nets flying everywhere. It's now becoming a safety hazard. Every time I complain to the management, um, like I said, I've been having a ticket for more than two months. Um, it's always a story that they waiting for the shop, they waiting for painters, this and that there. It's always a story behind it. And it's getting to the point where this is a safety hazard, like there's water rising from the floor every other hour and I have to dry it. I place these mats because me and the kids are tripping and falling all the time. And this is dangerous. So I don't know if the tickets are being pushed back, if they're being pushed around, waiting for this conversion. I'm not, I don't know what to think no more because I'm just tired. Like, I'm not sure what to do.
I, I'm sorry that you're, you're going through this and it's unacceptable. Um, and I think, you know, I think the sort of remedy is to continue speaking with your NICA property management team. But you, if you can provide us with your direct contact info, we can also work with the NICA property management staff to address this as well.
Yeah, Candy, this is, this is Sam. Would you mind sending an email to info@harlemriver.org? Um, and if you provide your contact information, we'd love to be able to reach out to you and try to see if we can help.
Sure, I can do so. I know that when you guys first did the first round of inspection, someone came to the apartment and they were kind of learning the situation that I was living with kids in the, in the apartment. And they said that, um, they wouldn't follow up, but there hasn't been no follow-up. So at this point, I'm just, I'm just like trying to run out of here. So one of the questions that I posted in the chat earlier was, I've been on the transfer list for a while now and I haven't got a, you know, an opportunity to get a new place to live. Um, I know that you guys mentioned that I will have to stay here, I believe, for a year before I'm able to get Section Eight. If I've been in the list for so long and I already know that I want to move somewhere else, do I have a chance to just get my Section Eight prior to the year so that I can move somewhere else? Or I just have Or I just have to stick it out one way?
Thank you for that question. Robert, are you able to address?
Yeah, sure. And again, I'm real sorry in that situation, but, you know, again, I think I answered the chat, but you can't get a Section Eight voucher prior to conversion. But certainly after conversion, we can consider a transfer. Now, if there's a reasonable accommodation or some type of emergency situation, that could be looked into. But generally, it's one year on the PAC program before you could transfer. And again, lease housing department will walk you through that process when the time comes. Now, as to your current transfer that you put in, unfortunately, at this time, my understanding is that that's cut off right now. So because we're so close to the closing, but that's something you can follow up with your management office.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you for the answer.
And Candy, please do again, reach out to our email address. I want to, I want to just say this is sort of generally applicable. What we can do now, because it's before the conversion, we can, what we're able to do is play sort of a communication role and help tenants who are having issues connecting with NYCHA and getting repairs, get into a proper right person. So we'll certainly look out for your email and try to get you to the right person so we can get that.
Thank you. I appreciate it because they typically good with solving situations, but I'm not sure about this point. It's just being pushed back.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll look out for your email.
Thank you. It looks like we have a few more hands raised. I'd like to ask the number ending in 5096 to please unmute. 5096. Can you please unmute?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening. I'm just calling to find out now, something was said earlier about the renovations is going to be in the summer now, getting pushed back before. And one of the package that you have is showing that, okay, central air, the heating, and it's also showing the fact that the windows are going to be changed. So now, if you're doing this renovation during the fall time, and we all know that it's going to get cold, how fast are these windows going to be put in? Because if we're sitting here in our house waiting for, I have what, five windows? I'm quite sure everybody has five to six, whatever amount of windows they have. If fall is coming, it's going to get colder, are the windows all going to be put in the same day? Each window one by one or all the windows at the same time?
Thank you so much for your question. Ellie, are you able to address the question?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Is your, well, first let me stress that the, we have a two-year window, roughly two and a half years, to complete the entire construction. So of course, we're going to be sensitive to the, the weather. And ideally, we're not installing windows in the heart of winter when it's 20 degrees outside. That would never, that would never be our intent. Truth be told, it's going to take a while for these windows to be manufactured anyway. So I don't see them going, if, if we're able to start work in September, there's certain things that we can hit the ground running with, and there are other things which materials have a longer lead time item, and we would not be starting with them. In general, in terms of the sequencing for all the work on site, we would want to address all the masonry concerns, all the issues with the facade, the brick. And then only after that would we install windows. So it's certainly not going to be the, the first thing. The other, does that, does that answer what you were, what you were referring to?
Yeah, that's pretty, yeah, answers somewhat. And also for when you do start, for the tenants that have air conditioners, now what happens with those? Are we getting some kind of money back for getting rid of that? Are y'all taking them in? What's happening?
So, so I, we've kind of addressed this in prior meetings, and if I'm recalling correctly, the answer, the answer from the team was that if, if the air conditioner is yours, which I believe typically they are, right? They belong to a tenant, and it's, it's your air conditioner. We would take it out of the existing window. And if you want to hold on to it, we can put it into a closet for you. If you want us to discard it, we could probably take care of that as well. It's, it'll be the tenant's option. It's your, it's your property. With that said, the new window will not accommodate a window air conditioner. And it would also, it's also just not going to be necessary because we'll have a more efficient, strong air conditioning.
Air and everything.
Right, right.
And one question more, if you happen to have a washing machine, is there a big problem? Would that be a big problem?
I, I, this is out of the construction scopes. I'm going to relay that over to someone from the developer or, or management.
Hi, this is, this is Doreen from CNC. Washing machines are legal, dryers are not.
They're not legal. Okay, that I know. All right, I just wanted to ask those questions, just to find out what's happening with that. All right then, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to go back to the translation lines to see if there are any additional questions.
No questions on the Spanish line.
No question in the Mandarin line. Thank you.
Okay, great. There are a couple of additional hands raised. I'm not sure if these are hands that never went down after the original questions were asked. But can the number ending in 1089 please unmute? Hi, 1089, can you please unmute?
Praise the Lord. Does everyone hear me?
Yes, hi.
How are you? I have two questions, please. Will all the floors be changed to wood floors?
So we can discuss the scope a bit more. I'll hand over to my colleague Ellie, but do you also want to ask your other question?
Yes, and the other question is, why us tenants cannot have a dryer?
Okay, thank you so much. So Ellie, can you discuss the apartment renovation scope?
Yeah, sure. In terms of the flooring, we're putting in, we're replacing, we're, I'm sorry. We're putting in new flooring, LVT, luxury vinyl tile. So it, as opposed to having a mimicking what you have now, which is a 12 by 12 tile, it's a longer format, roughly two to four foot pieces. So it mimics the layout of a wood floor, but it's not wood. Primary reason why we don't go back with a wood floor is just that we, you wouldn't be able to open any of the doors in your apartment at that point. You know, so we have to be mindful of the existing, the existing thresholds. So vinyl is a, is a pretty flat product, or, or, you know, it's only 12 millimeters thick. Whereas, you know, I think you're in an engineer wood floor, you're looking at at least five eighths or a half inch. So we'd, you know, you'd have tripping hazards throughout the, throughout the apartment as you walk in, going from the common hallway to the apartment. So this has been a, this is what we found to be a nice, clean, long-lasting product that also aesthetically looks, looks great.
So that's going to be all the floors with that?
The bathroom gets, thank you for, for asking that. The bathroom, I should have clarified, the bathroom gets a porcelain tile.
Oh, porcelain tile, all right. And the kitchen?
The kitchen would get, would get the same LVT flooring that the rest of the unit would get.
Oh, all right, all right. Now, how about the walls or by the tub, over the tub? Because right now, I call this a sheet that we have now. And I'm, I'm pretty sure when you, when you all sent the inspection, two men out, they saw that. So the sheet that's over my tub, will that be taken down and will we be given nice towel?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the last part. Will, will you be given a nice towel? Right. So when we go into the bathrooms, first of all, we'll be replacing all the existing fixtures. So the existing tub will come out, you'll get a brand new tub. Same for the, same for the sink, same for the toilet. A little different layout for the sink, we'll be putting in a vanity, or at least that's the, that's the plan. Around the tub, what, what you're referring to as a sheet, we like to call a tub surround. It's typically a three-piece fiberglass assembly. It will have an integrated soap dish, but our plan is not to go back with, with tile. But an actual tub surround.
So the tub surround that you're planning on putting in, is it easy to clean? Because I call this, like I said, a sheet. It's not easy to clean at all. So what you all are putting in, will it be easy to clean?
Right, I would say it's easier than, than tile, where you have to deal with, with mildew building up in the grout lines around the tile itself. It's actually, it's actually marketed as a easy to clean, very hygienic product in, in general. And what we like to do after, after we do an installation in the apartment, it's a lot of new, new materials. We typically give a one to two-page flyer to the tenants just to, you know, let them know, you know, you can buy, buy this, buy Bar Keepers Friend, don't buy an abrasive soap, use this, don't use that, et cetera. And then the staff, the staff on site will be very familiar with all the products and can help answer any questions as well.
Wonderful. All right, all right. And like I said, the second question was, why is it we can't have dryers? I would like to understand that. What's the purpose of not being able to have dryers?
So thank you so much for that question. I'd like to ask Robert to outline the HQS process and the requirements associated with it.
My apologies. Could you repeat that?
Yes, she asked why they are not allowed to have dryers in their units.
Right, so I'm going to refer you to your current public housing lease, which stipulates that no dryers are allowed in the units. From a Section Eight HQS perspective, that is an air quality issue. But again, your current public housing lease prohibits the use of dryers.
But aren't we going to be changing to a new lease with you all in Section Eight? Why is it that we have to go back to New York City housing type of lease? When we will be changing to Rad, this lease that you are going to be giving us? So it's two different leases, so it should be a different rule. And I don't see the necessity that we cannot have dryers, as well so is the washing machine. Because like I know for a fact, it's a lot of disabled people in here. Everyone doesn't have a home house or a household, a home health aid. Some people in here, they disable, they take, try to take care of themselves as much as they can, and they need their washer and dryer. So why things can't change with you all? That's what I would like to understand.
So I do want to clarify that residents are allowed to keep their existing washing machine. But as Robert indicated, it's a requirement of Section Eight in HQS that.
I'm sorry, this is an inquiry by the interpreter. We cannot hear you very well. Can you repeat that, please?
Yes, I apologize. So I want to clarify that residents are allowed to keep their existing washing machines. But as Robert indicated, it's both a requirement of Section Eight and the HQS rules that dryers are prohibited. Robert, do you want to further elaborate?
But that's still not answering. I don't mean to step in like this, but it's still not answering the question, the statement that I made. Since we are going over to Rad, you all, we won't be in public housing, section, section nine, we'll be in section eight. What's, what's the problem that we can't have dryers? Because they make all types of dryers now to accommodate apartments, as well so as houses. So why is it that we cannot? I don't understand that. I would like to understand that.
Robert, can you explain the HQS process? I actually don't think we even defined the HQS in this meeting.
Yeah, again, I just want to, and I understand totally where you're coming from with that. And again, you have to understand that, you know, basically from our point of view, from the HQS standard, you're looking at a air quality issue, you know, and potential fire hazard. So that is something that is a concern with all these buildings that NYCHA, you know, basically runs. And again, that is a reason why we had that stipulated in your public housing lease. So again, I mean, I'll defer to public housing right now, but for the most part, under the Section Eight, you will have inspectors that'll come to the house or to your apartment, and if there's a dryer present, it'll fail, fail inspection.
The other thing I wanted to, I wanted to just add a couple other details. First of all, we discussed, I think we discussed this in an earlier meeting, and the recordings are all on our website. But we will be installing three laundromats in the building for residents.
Would you, would you repeat that again? You would be installing what now?
Yes, ma'am. We will be just installing three laundromats in the buildings for residents to use. So first of all, you're not going to be left without a facility. The second thing to keep in mind is that as the, the future landlord, the lease is not something, and I'm sorry, I should say laundry rooms, not laundromats, laundry rooms. They will have washer rooms. In terms of what is not in the lease, that is, it's sort of a question that needs the, the ask of, of NYCHA. It's not.
I'm sorry, Sam, this is an inquiry by the interpreter. So it sounds a little muffled. We can't hear you very well.
I'm so sorry. Can you hear me now, Catalina?
A little better, yes.
Okay, I'm leaning close to the microphone, so sorry that my face is right in the middle of the computer screen. If you have a question about what is in the lease and why certain things are in there, why they are not in there, these are questions that please do, we really encourage you to direct to NYCHA. Can't sort of take things, put things in the lease willy-nilly and take things out. We don't have control over those provisions. So please do ask NYCHA. What I will say in general is that Robert referred to something called HQS, which refers to housing quality standards. It is an inspection that will be performed each year. I believe the requirements are determined by the federal government. Is that right, Robert?
Yes, HQS, housing quality standards is a federal requirement under the Section Eight program.
Got it.
So absolutely.
Right, I'm sorry, Robert. So essentially, ma'am, the requirement of no dryers is part of the federal standard that we have to adhere to. It's not, it's not arbitrarily saying you have to follow up.
I hear what you're saying, but I've been in this establishment since 1985, and it has not been a fire coming from a dryer at all. Matter of fact, we really don't have fires in the apartment. So all those that do have dryers, we haven't had a problem with any of that. And like I said earlier, they do make dryers, you know, companies do make dryers to accommodate apartments, and they are not highly hot, and it's no problem. So I don't understand why the federal government would, you know, have that type of stipulation in the apartments of housing. When a lot of people, this is a new day in time. This is not years and years ago. They make dryers that's very standard to go in apartments, and they're not overly hot. And like I said, I've been here since 1985. I haven't heard or seen any fires take place from a dryer with those that do have dryers.
Yeah, a- a- absolutely. I mean, that, that makes sense. You know, as, as the, the incoming landlord, I mean, it's, I hear you, I really do hear you. Um, it was a federal requirement that we're, we're, we're sort of at the behest of the federal government here. There are requirements that they, that we have to follow. Um, one of them being the HUS rules. Um, and within those rules, as they are currently, as they currently exist from the federal government, one of them is no dryers. You know, to talk more about this, I, you know, I, I really do encourage you to reach out to our, um, our email address if you'd like to, like to talk with us directly about this. Um, absolutely happy to do that. Um, our email address is info@harlemriver.org. Um, that's info@harlemriver.org. And we, I'd be happy, we'd be happy to, to keep talking about this.
All right, I, I get my daughter to do that because she's tech savvy, I'm not. So I will get my daughter to do that. But again, I do not really understand why this should be from federal or anyone, because this is a new day and time. And, um, things are made different, made more safer. And, and not only that, when someone spoke about, you're going to put, um, uh, um, washrooms, uh, laundry rooms in the buildings, are, is that going to be in every building? And some of us cannot walk the steps. I could see if these Harlem River One was, um, uh, elevator. But we are not elevator in Harlem River One. None of Harlem River One is elevator. Not one of us, buildings are. Only one is twenty-eight fifty. That's, that's only elevator we have. We don't have no other elevators. So disabled people, I'm going back to disabled people, they cannot, some of them cannot be walking up and down the steps.
Or.
So that's going to be a problem for, you know, disabled people that can't be walking up and down the steps to go to the laundromat or the laundry room and do their clothes, you know, wash them and dry them. That's going to be a problem. This is the reason why a lot of us have, uh, washing machines in our apartments.
Absolutely. Yeah, so again, I, I, I actually think we were at time, we're actually a little older time. Um, so if you, if you don't mind, if you, if you want to send us a message or I think you mentioned that your daughter would send us an, an email. We'd love to talk to you more about this, um, and give you more information.
All right.
Um, I'm so sorry to cut you short. Um, but if you want to send us an email, um, we'd be happy to reach out to you and discuss, discuss some more.
All right, I thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So with that, we are at time. It is just after seven thirty. Uh, thank you, everyone, for coming here, for being here, for spending time, um, asking questions and, um, telling us your thoughts. We really appreciate it. Um, it really helps this project be the best it can be. Um, we really encourage you to reach out to us through our email address or our phone number. Um, we'd love to continue to hear from you. Um, we will continue to have these town hall meetings, they're every four to six weeks. And of course, we'll post flyers and, um, drop off notices to let you know when they will occur. But for now, we'll sign off. Um, again, thank you so much, everyone, and hope that you have a great night and stay safe.
Thank you.